Recording clerk. All right. I will call the special meeting of the Southridge Board of Health. I'll call the meeting to order Wednesday, May first, 2024, 2:02 PM. In the Veterans Room. They have a, uh, roll call, please. I'll call to order of members.
Roland LaRiche.
Present.
Kevin S. Wayne.
Present.
Gus Steves. Jasmine Canones.
And we haven't heard. Gil Provost says excused, he's away.
Excused, okay.
All right. We have the special meeting agenda, which will be review and approve regulations and updates. A is 5.5.6. It says fees, so I'll entertain a motion to open this.
Motion.
We have a motion by Mr. S. Wayne. Second by Mr. Steves. All right. There's one thing that I learned by a meeting the other day with Mr. Manager. Some of these things are procedures. And others are regulations. And I would like to entertain a discussion on 5.5.6 that I believe this is under procedure, not regulation. Because the only thing that it pertains to is if you don't pay your fee. But that's a common, that's a standard thing throughout any fee that somebody owes the town of Southridge.
So that's a regulation?
So that would be a procedure, not a regulation. So determining, uh, the circumstan- well, I'll read it for the sake of it. Board of Health and Solid Waste Agent at their discretion, uh, discretion determine whether circumstances exist for a property owner that they should not be required to pay a solid waste fee. Starting with that one line. That's already in the opt-out, which is in the next paragraph. Correctness. Solid Waste Agent. So there is already a procedure for opting out. And we'll get into another issue after. The second part.
Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't mean to jerk. This you may have to keep in because.
Of which part?
This, this language, because it allows us then to collect those unpaid. What we're talking about is the opt-out. Procedures and dates really should be a, uh, a policy.
We have to put the date.
Yeah.
Which?
Is under 5.5.7.
We have the 5.5.7.
Right. So you may have to leave this because that allows you to collect the fees.
Okay.
This 5.5.6.
Do we need that first line?
No, probably not. I think if it starts with fees not collected. We could reverse 5.6 and 5.7.
Or keep it as written. I just don't want to get trouble in the collector.
No, right, yeah, we'd have to keep it in so that this collection. I think the question becomes who makes the determination about they exist? Because you have double language in there.
That's what I'm saying. Because we have, we already have the. God, did you scare me?
One less day rolling.
Five alarms.
So i- i- if it's gonna be the board that's at their discretion, are they in the determination of who's gonna pay and not pay?
Well, that's the, that nominee was something different, Kevin. That's gonna be the, uh, the procedure for.
Right.
So it's the, it, it, it's through the process in the Board of Health Office whether people are gonna opt out. Or as discussed, the procedure if they have a vacant apartment.
Right. Yeah, that, that way you double talk about it being.
Correct.
All a procedure.
A procedure.
But you need to do, we need language in there. Somebody at their discretion determines whether.
Okay, so we keep 5.5.6 that. Fees not collected, the second part. Fees not collected shall be subject to all. Collection remedies are provided for real estate collection, including interest and demand fees. Any fee not paid in 30 days from the date of the electronic transmission or emailing of each bill may add a lien to the property and, and the follow-up fiscal year's real estate bill. Not in, but in the bill. Such items shall remain valid to the extent allowed by law. So we keep that in so that we have the, the checks and balances as who determined and what the process is if, if the fee is not paid. And that's a, that's a, uh, regulation. So we'll keep that as a whole.
If I can clarify, the question, it mentions here electronic transmission of the bill. People are getting them electronic. Because I know every, most people get them mail, by mail. So what do you mean by that?
It says electronic transmission or mailing. So it's gonna cover us either way because we have to look to the future. What, what's gonna happen in 2028? And then we don't have to go back and do this if it turns to electronic because it does, it says or.
True, but a lot of people may not get, get electronic transmissions.
Well, they get it in the mail. So it's covered.
We're covering it both ways.
Yeah.
Yes, it's covered. Any question or any discussions on the board on 5, 5.6?
So just to clarify, so we are getting, basically getting rid of that first line.
No, we're not gonna get rid of anything right now. Because.
I think it makes sense to start at fees not collected.
Anything else from the board? That contrary to what this writ, writing is?
Just to clarify to, uh, member of these. Electronic, they have to choose to get electronic billing. So that would be totally up to the customer about electronic billing.
But it's possible even today.
Right, but you make that choice whether you want electronic.
Right.
Or mailing, so it's up to the board.
Yes. So that covers us both ways. Anything from, so nothing from the board, anything from the public? Okay. All right. So I'll take the, uh, vote in favor as written from the board, all those in favor? Okay, give the analyst of all those, the three of us. Okay. The next one, 5.5.7 opt-in, opt-out. There has been some work done on this since it's been written. And I would like to go through this basically line by line.
You said seven, I'm sorry.
5.5.7.
Thank you.
That Agenda item B. Okay. The intent of this one was to, um, was to capture vacant apartments as well as those that maybe aren't occupied because the owner goes to Florida for three, four, or five months. So on the first line, any, how did we write that?
Any homeowner occupied can opt in or out.
Right, it's owner occupied. So that's the change in the first line. Can in, opt, opt in or out, have 30 days prior to the quarterly billing to do so. Uh, requests needed to be received by the 30th of each month. And the months are listed as February, May, August, and November. Unless that falls on a weekend, then it will require to be on a Friday prior before. Opting in or out can be done on the Southridge Mass website under opengov.com, period. Any questions on that, writing on that first line?
No.
The next line is procedure. You can come into the office, they'll help you, you can do it online, blah, blah, blah. So we're not gonna include that in a regulation.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, all of a sudden, you just said that opengov is not in the text.
Yeah, I don't have that either.
It was, it was. The last meeting, but it was, it is not in the text.
Yeah, that's why we deleted it. It's a procedure, it's considered as a procedure.
I'll go to this one.
Oh, he had the wrong one.
Oh, okay, I'll go to this one. So we're starting at the Friday before.
Yes.
Okay. That's right, this is the fix, this is fixed.
So this is the part that says owner occupied.
On the first.
The first line.
The first line, it will be owner occupied. The intent of the board is not to have, um, to take care of the owner occupied facilities, not an owner that lives, and it's a total rental property. It's owner occupied benefit. That's what the intent was. Did you have a?
No.
Okay.
Questions, I can, you want to ask a question?
I, I don't know if I solved it. Yeah, when you say owner occupied, what was it? What is owner occupied, owner occupied is?
Owner occupied is you live in the dwelling.
Right.
You have an unrented apartment that you haven't rented for years and you want to go through the process of having, um, not having, to prove that it's non-inhabitable and non-rented.
Right.
You have to be the owner occupied. Not rental property that it's a two-family somewhere.
Right.
Also, you're the owner of the house. You're going to Florida or somewhere during the bad weather for 15 months. If you're the tenant, it's not your problem. You can only apply for not being required to pay in the process of opting out if you're the owner of that property responsible to pay the bill for those tolls. You look confused.
It doesn't say that in the text.
Well, we just changed that first line to any owner occupied homeowner.
An owner of an, owner occupied.
The ten, the owner goes away for three months.
Correct.
And none, nothing on the property, no tax services rented to the property. I mean, no trash services rented during that three-month period. Even if their tenants there, is what you're saying?
If you own a two-family.
Right.
You're the owner. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent for the board, please. There was, there was things brought at the last public hearing, questions from the audience on if you are a two-family and you are the owner, but you want to opt out from paying for two units because you go to Florida for five months? It's your unit. Because you're going to Florida and you're responsible for paying for both units. So there's going to be the process where you can opt out while you're going to Florida. The owner occupied. If your tenant goes to Florida, they're not the owner. That does not apply. Right? Did I try to help make it clear or did I confuse you more?
I keep coming back to the problem. I, I have a hard time distinguishing what the difference is between opting out and paying for your trash services. Why wouldn't I get the same benefit on my real estate taxes?
Because the property still exists. And you're still using that, you're still using that service.
Well, but you, but the example you made, the tenant is still using the service while on the way.
Because you pay for that one.
You still pay for that one unit. Your unit you want to pay for is the owner occupied unit. Your tenant's unit, you still have to, you're still responsible for that unit.
Because they're using the service.
But what if it's the other way around? What if the tenant goes?
This goes to the benefit is the owner.
I understand that, but if, but it's the property. So if the owner wants to apply for a tenant being gone six months, it ends up being the same thing.
They don't apply on the town of Southridge.
I can't get over the hurdle. In my, in my head, it's absolutely not. I just think that the more, sometimes life becomes complicated only when you put more nuance and more complications into it.
You're absolutely, no.
The worst, and I, how you plan to police this is beyond me. Because I know, I've had meetings that we attended in the early stages. Everyone was in a fuss as to who was gonna do the billing, how we're gonna overburden the tax collector, treasurers, um, how this is all gonna go down. And now you're talking about being able to have, you know, you're gonna have to accept applications for abatements. You're gonna have to police communities and see if, if somebody really is away, et cetera, et cetera. And but the overall thing with me is, I, if I, so if I decided to go to Vermont for three months, realistically, I'm not moving, I'm not using the property. I'm not using the property, so I should really receive a rebate on my taxes. I'm not practicing the use and enjoyment of my property located with town of Southridge. That to me is, and by the way, good luck finding me. You know, if I'm hiding in a closet somewhere in the process. Not really in Vermont.
Well, here's, you know, the board doesn't have to vote on this. And I have mixed feelings on this, but this was brought up. This was brought up at the public hearing. And my comment to people that I did not, I wasn't there, but I listened to it. And my question to people, because people were irate, I'm paying for service, I'm not having. Your property is still being protected by the fire department, by the police department answering burglar alarms and so on and so forth. My opinion is when people go to Florida and you go to Vermont for three months, do you shut off the water and have the meter removed? Do you pay the minimum on your electric bill? If I can afford to go to Florida for three, four months, I'm not gonna worry about them picking up my trash. I'm gonna pay $115. But it was brought to the board. We can say, no, you're either gonna, if you opt in, show us a collector and you deal with that. And be done.
People are objecting, I think people are objecting because this is now an issue.
Oh, sure.
This, the party is finally ended and some people do not like to face the fact that the party is ended.
You're exactly right.
This is what it is, so now we're, everyone is looking for a loophole and, and some way of getting under the fence. And suddenly, what shouldn't be a problem, because I'll tell you what. If, if you can't afford the, if you do, if you, there's only one option to opt out, in my head. I now have to find another private carrier. I'm gonna take the private carrier's quote and I'm gonna compare it to the town of Southridge quote. It's gonna be math and I'm gonna make a decision whether I'm making my decision sitting, sipping out of a drink with an umbrella in it in Florida or I'm sitting here. So I, I'm gonna make that decision and it's very simple to me. And I don't see.
Can we put a sixth member on the board?
I, I think we've had this conversation before.
Yes.
It'd be interesting to see, what are the private haulers doing? Right? If I sign a contract with X company, are they gonna give me an abatement if I decide to go to Florida? I signed that contract for a year and they said I have to pay another quarter. Are they giving me an abatement saying I don't have to pay for the trash? I would like to know because I think the contract is repaid.
One is.
Everything's more expensive than free. Everything's more expensive than free and suddenly we're not afraid anymore.
That's for sure.
And, and if you don't, and the taxes, the taxes are too high, you move. You go somewhere, I mean, it's, this is basic.
I agree, we've been spoiled. And I'm paying the bill like anybody else.
Oh, yeah, so are we.
This right here is, correct me if I'm wrong, the previous verbiage in it was opt-in, but we didn't have the verbiage to opt out.
Correct.
So this 5.5.7, as I read, is the owner, which is the responsible party, opts out. Because we didn't have it written. So that's where they turn around and they want to opt out. They have to go in, they have to holler, they have proof of a contract from a holler. We go pick up the trash buckets and you don't get a bill. Opt out, done. Have a nice day. The short-term opt-out is a different issue.
Yes, that's what this is.
And, well, all this says is that it depends when you opt out. You don't want a bill, you gotta opt out before the bills go up.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's basically what it says. Your quarterly bills, and that's why the dates are there. You opt out 30 days prior to the bill, sign your contract, you won't get a bill, it won't be processed. That's basically what that line says in opting out. Right? Do I get that? Okay. That's the first line of opting out. The second line to discuss a problem even before the, what do they call them, the snowbirds.
Yep.
There's a lot of old homes and people have approached the board. Family homes, used to be a three-family. The family has passed on and they haven't rented it. And the, the apartments are unrentable and they haven't rented it for the last 50 years. My parents' house was one of them that we used it as a single family for 100 years, but it's assessed at a two-family. How is that addressed? Okay. Homeowners with vacant units may opt out if the home is owner occupied. We require sufficient proof. And it just lists the current utility bill, water bill, driver's license, everything that you are the homeowner, which is easy enough. Each unit must be vacant for at least the quarter. You must approved, you must be approved before the 30th of each month. That's that billing cycle, February, May, August, and November. The units will be required to have an inspection by the approved inspector from the town of Southridge, followed by periodic spot checks. If it is an inhabitable apartment and there's proof in it that three-family could now be for trash as a two-family. Is that, um, policeable?
No. Is, is my bill gonna go up next year because you have to pay a guy to go knock on everyone's door to make sure on June is really living with you and not in the separate apartment?
The bill's all based on.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Policing is a problem.
Gus.
Couple of suggestions to kind of tie into this. Go, first of all, um, one line here where it says opt-out, this is really, we need to use different phrasing for this section because opting out is getting out of the system entirely. This is opting in and out. It's, we need to clarify that that opt-out, if we use that phrasing, is opt-out for that specific unit, not the entire property.
No, no, this is not the entire property.
I know, but that's not what that says. Opt-out previous and others, another circumstances is, is the entire property. We need to be clear on that.
This, this paragraph, opt-in or out, that can be the entire property. When you look at the last thing I just.
Can't use the same phrasing as opt-out. Um, what I'm suggesting is the following. It was into, this, this really ties, what we're talking about here is really an abatement process of, of allowing somebody to not pay the bill for a while. Um, and what I, what I would like to suggest is something like this. We're talking owner occupied and stuff, so I would, I think it, we phrase it like this. Abatements shall be available for owner occupied properties under the following conditions. And it will tie into what we were talking about at the last meeting. One is financial hardship. Documentation of income, and I set up the list of why, what qualifies as documentation. And then the second one is permanent lack of tenants and units. Certification that the assessors have legally changed the house's use classification to a smaller number of units. Regardless of what zone it's in. And in this case.
I have no idea what you're talking about because if they declassified it because of units and assessors say it's no longer a three-family, it's a two-family, it doesn't apply because that's what the tax bill's gonna go out as a two-family. It all comes from the assessor's office.
Well, that, but that, the point is though, is that there'll be people who, because some of the issues we're seeing today are people that are assessed as, say, three families, but they're saying they've never rented the top floor for, you know, 20 years now.
That's what I just.
Still assessed as three families.
That's what I just read.
That's not, I put that, I didn't read it that way, because that's not.
That's what I just read about having the inspection.
Yeah, the inspectors, inspection is one thing. That's, that's deciding it's actually, whether it's actually usable or not. And I have, I have prefer that in here too.
Each unit or units must be vacant for at least the quarter. I haven't used that unit for 30 years. Because we bill on a quarter, it will be inspected by the quarter. You must be approved before the 30th of each month to be, for the bill section. And you're required to have an inspection. And that will follow under the process set forth by the Board of Health of how you get that inspection. But you could follow up by periodical spot checks to make sure that it remains vacant. It's. I don't understand.
Every quarter you have to submit approval to then it's no longer, it's still not a three-family? Every quarter you have to make a bid to opt, to that benefit?
No, every quarter, and there's a proceed, there, there was a procedure discussed. You're billed on every quarter.
Right.
So to keep people honest, there will, there will be an appointment made and inspector will go and make sure that it's still vacant before the next quarter. And there are people.
That's a little burdensome for the person who has to do it.
Not, not really, because there are three inspectors that have been hired to go around and look at properties for trash and compliance and so on and so forth that are on the job now. Um, right now, they're pretty busy and correct me if I'm wrong because we have, we're, we gaining the containers that people opt out. But once these are all figured by what, another month and a half? Now it's gonna be focused on their job about compliance. Is there trash in the yard? Is the barrels overflowed? Are those apartments still vacant? These are all gonna be within the inspection for compliance to the regulations.
But the less compliances you give them, the less people are needed. Maybe you only need two inspectors.
They were, I don't think so because here's the problem, here's the problem. Or here's the reality with the inspectors. They're all part-time, they work different shifts. They're all less, I think, 215 hours a week. 119 hours a week. They're all part-time so they don't get benefits. And they're staggered hours. So that one inspector at a time is out in the road.
I'm not advocating that anyone lose their job. I'm simply making the point that the more exceptions you find, the more inspections and clarifications and maybe sitting you need. And that seems to me to be a good problem.
I don't particularly disagree with you. Because as far as I'm concerned, I don't have this option. I have a single family.
Yes, right.
You either go by our rules or go get a private haul. That would be the way I would like to see. But the problem is, the board can vote no because there was a public hearing. Citizens got up and said, I have vacant apartments, help me. Citizens got up and said, because we've been spoiled. I go to Florida for six months. I'm not using the service. By rights, we're working for the citizens and as citizens, we have to entertain that thought process. Doesn't mean we're gonna vote for it. And personally, I like to make it simple because if you can't afford the house seller, I have to pay my bills.
Well, the classification thing, you're gonna get fight, fight tooth and nail because if you, to be honest, the cleanest way to do it is to make people classify their homes. None of this, you have to inspect it every 30 days to see it's not a three-family. Force the classification of the home as a single-family home. I don't want to do that because when I go to resell, I'll get more if I sell it as a three-family. Well, there you go. You can't have everything.
And we don't, we don't classify it. It's all in the assessment. They would have to go.
That's why it says that, that's why it says.
Counsel McCetty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. I don't have a problem if somebody has a vacant unit, that they are able to opt out of just that unit.
That's what this is.
That's why I have a problem with that because this is a user fee. This is not property taxes. And according to state law, user fee, if a resident is not using something, they don't have to pay for it. Snowbirds, that's a different issue. I never brought that up. As far as I'm concerned. As far as I'm concerned, they should not be allowed to opt out. And if somebody says, well, do I get a tax break if I go to Florida for three months?
No.
No, you don't get a tax break. And you shouldn't get, uh, this fee taken away because, because you're going to Florida for three months. But it's different when you have a vacant property, a vacant unit, and no one's using it. It is a user fee, so.
Mr. Chairman, for you, I agree with Counsel McCetty as far as the snowbirds. I don't think that should be included in this. I think the vacant property thing, we, we were kind of more leaning towards how I took at the last meeting was properties that were, someone owns a three-family and apartment's been vacant for 20 years. Because of, yeah, as far as the snowbird thing, I have my opinions on that. I don't agree with, they don't give them a discount. And if you own a house in Southridge and you go to Florida for three months, I think you can afford a $115 bill on your trash. I mean, we're trying to help. I, I just, I, if this, what we're going on now, 5.5.7 includes that quote-unquote "snowbird" policy, I get a vote no on that. I'd like to remove that, if that includes that snowbird, I'd like to remove that from that. I think the snowbirds is a totally, whole new ballgame, a whole new. Okay. I think the snowbirds is a totally, whole new ballgame, a whole new thing to rule on separately.
The snowbirds should be a separate item.
A separate item, not agreed.
And from our discussion, we were not discussing this within 557. Correct me if I'm wrong, Maritza. This was for the family owned, and the intent was a family owned, old property, like the entire length of Henry Street. That was all family owned. And Nana is the only one there, or whoever the owner is, and the top two floors have been vacant since the family passed on.
Yep.
It's not occupied, it hasn't been occupied, it's inspected to show, and there will be a check sheet.
Yeah.
So if you've got couches, you've got TVs, you've got bedding, you've got dishes in the cabinet, that does not comply because when the kid comes home from college, they can live in that apartment. We have to be responsible to all the taxpayers, all because of the people that like to cheat. So there will be a, a process with a check sheet that if this, if it's unlivable, and that's why it's done and inspected per quarter, because we bill per quarter. So it's the use, like, like you had said, the use.
I do have one more question to be on that. I, I don't understand what the big deal is. I'm not saying that it's tough or easy or whatever. All I'm asking is, why is it so difficult for somebody to be able to opt out anytime they want? I've heard everybody say, "Well, it'd be too much work for someone to do that." But I've heard no one come to these meetings and say, "This is why it would be too much work to let somebody opt out or opt in anytime that they want to." I don't understand.
The process is simple. But in order for this, one person owning a three family that only has one apartment rented to opt out, they have to opt out on everything. So, a way to solve this, to make it simple, because like you say, if two apartments are unused, it's a user fee. Okay, opt out from the town of Southridge and then hire a private to set one to observe.
I just wonder why, if they couldn't opt out anytime they want.
Go ahead.
Because you have a quarterly bill and then you have to issue an abatement.
Right.
Because it's just too much, because then you have to, it, no.
Okay, I believe you, if like somebody...
No, no, because you've already issued the bill, so it's almost like a tax bill. This is a bill, so we commit that bill from, just like a real estate tax, any other water sewer user fee, we have that commitment, right? So then we'd have to prorate it and all that. So it's easier to say, "Look, this is the opt-out period." I, I agree with the opt-out periods. Look, you wanna opt out, you pay that $115 for a quarter, you know, we'll allow you to opt out the next quarter, you pay your bill, next quarter, go whoever you want.
Right.
That's fine. We don't have a problem. And you're not gonna get a cheaper rate if you just wanna go there. I, I think, you know, I keep going back to this winter policy, very simple, huh?
I said, "Oh"?
No, just the language, it's very simple. And the form, here's the abatement, private holler. You wanna opt out, private holler, provide your contract, provide your information.
Done.
Done. Abatement for unoccupied and a multi-unit dwelling, right? Here you go, prove you have it on, and I like your thing, inspection, there's no furnitures, there's none, that's it. Other than that?
Done.
Done.
Yeah.
Because if you don't wanna participate in our program, thank you very much, have a nice day, go to what you want.
And by the way, let us know if you find one cheaper because they get a ton of contractors.
And then, and then the enforcement is, just like Maritza and then her team has done, that everybody's done a work together. Okay, you opt out, we're going to get your tota.
Correct.
We're getting your, your salvage tota, your salvage recycling, you're not getting picked up. That's it. Done. Done.
As opposed, as opposed to doing opt-outs for quarters and stuff like that, you're either...
No, that is...
No, 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 you can opt out the next quarter. That's fine, but we're picking up your totas. There's no totas, we're not picking you up. If you have a vacant lot, or you have a vacant apartment, and it's a two family, you better have had the abatement, you know, owner occupied two family, we're gonna allow you to opt out, it's a two family, three family, we'll bill you for the one unit, but we're gonna do spot checks with the inspectors. It's only one unit, one tota. Otherwise, it's a $250 fine, thank you very much, we put that in a revolving account, and, and do those inspection fees, and then we pay inspectors out of it. It should be very simple, very...
That's what we're trying to do with that. That's what we're trying to do with that. This does not apply to the snowbirds.
Right, because...
This, this thing.
That's it, you're done.
This is why you said...
If you even want to go to Florida, then pay the $115 for the trash.
You know something?
I'm sorry.
I mean, my...
And I'm a taxpayer here, so I, I mean, I...
You're paying nothing in Florida for the trash bags.
Well, listen, I listened to Mr...
I bet they're paying bills there too.
Rick Clements, who owns a property in Marshville, right? Uninhabitable, nothing, right? He's still required to pay that fee and provide documentation that he's getting his trash picked up from somewhere.
Rick Clements makes a lot more money there.
No, Counsel McCetty, with all due respect, it doesn't matter on income levels, it's the policy.
Correct.
It's the policy. They say, "This is our policy, that's it." You know, and I, I respect people and I understand people have incomes, but if you don't wanna participate in the program and you have a four-family home, right? You either do it our way, or go to somebody else. We want you to come to us because we have the cheapest rate.
Correct.
But if you choose to go to somebody else, that's your choice. Go. It's, we can't have all these layers, we don't have enough staff. This operation here is an $84 million operation, we don't have the staff to do it.
Correct.
You want a tailored plan, you go to a private holler. You want it tailored to you, get, get a private holler.
You go to snowbirds and they can do it, right?
This article has nothing to do with snowbirds. This tried to refer to if you are the owner and you have a vacant unit.
Right.
Just exactly what we're talking. That's all we're talking on this article. Because we have not even drawn up anything about the snowbirds for the board to say no to.
Right.
Because, you know, if you got that four family, you also have three units of tax deduction that single family people don't have tax deductions.
That's true too.
And there's many, and there's many tenants that already, or landlords, that have raised their rent to accommodate for our fee. So let me tell you, even if they have a three family, because I know somebody that has done this to a family member of mine, has a three family got their trash, bill, up their rent to accommodate monthly...
And they're probably not even living in that three family either.
No, they're not.
Exactly.
All right, so they up the rent $75 per month.
But this is owner occupied.
This is, this is only for the owner benefit.
Well, they own it, they down in the Cape, because they have some place down in the Cape, they live there out there, aren't they? They rent out the three family, but they're only renting out the first family.
This would not apply to them.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, they're not, they're not renting the other two floors, but they raise the rent to accommodate...
Of course they do.
Of course they do, yeah.
That, that bill, people will accommodate and rent. And listen, most of those, a lot of residents where they have additional resources from whatever agency they get, they're, they're paying it, they're upping their rent. These rents in town everywhere are $1,900. Come on, I mean, I mean, with the taxes they pay and all that, if you're telling me...
That is part of the problem. The catch is the, the single property of, like, one family owners who really are on the edge of poverty.
You know something, Gus?
That was something people that came up to the last...
I'm a single family, I, I own a single family.
Yeah.
Okay? I really get aggravated when people cry me a river about poor single family owners. Because if I can't afford my single family, I am going to sell it and I'm going to downsize it. Because I am on fixed income, I'm retired and I work part-time and my wife works. We both bust our butt, okay? These multi-family units are a business.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
I don't get a tax break. Okay? So, and there's a process out there in the government for poverty people, okay? There's all this help out there.
The problem is, if you're, if you're a poor homeowner, you can't get help. You get it if you're a renter.
Are we on opt-in, opt-out?
This is opt-in, opt-out.
There's nothing there for, for people who own...
My only follow-up is that, had we done an override, they would've been paying this at a lot more rate. Would not have that.
Probably true.
No, it is true.
It is true, yeah.
A two-and-a-half override on the dollar amount that's cost us for this program, on an average single family home of $305,000 in the town of Southridge, would've been a $474 increase in taxes for a year.
I disagree.
Okay? No, that's a number, plug it into...
I disagree on that.
Plug it into the DSO, the population of local services website, they could do the $4 million, they'll tell you how much it is.
Hey, Jack, what, how much?
All right, we had a, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. So we got a motion to move the question.
2.6 million.
We got a motion to move the question.
As written with occupied in the...
On the first...
Line.
So you make a motion to accept 557 with the amended language of any owner occupied?
Any owner of an, owner occupied house, home.
How did you have that first line written?
Any home owner occupied...
Perfect.
Can opt in or out.
Done.
That's my motion.
So, I'm sorry, Kev, say it again, your motion is to...
I made a motion to move the question as, written as any homeowner occupied. So we're gonna add the word occupied after owner.
No, and I think, I think the phrase you want is owner of an owner occupied home. Just to clarify, just to clarify, well, you want it to be clear.
I need a second.
I need a second.
So that's my motion, so...
On which one?
Kevin's moving the question.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
You can't move questions at us. Well, I suppose you can. I take it fine.
Roland Larishow?
Yes.
Kevin Swayne?
Yes.
Gus Deeps?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. The 558, which I believe is the last two paragraphs, correct, Maritza?
Correct.
The last two paragraphs will be stricken. Did I say that right? Because when you read the paragraph, it is procedure of how the previously mentioned article is gonna be enforced by the inspection.
Certification. And the last one is move the question, but that doesn't mean you voted on the question, you just moved it.
We just did.
No.
Oh, we voted, oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay. All right, so we're gonna take a vote on 557 as amended, owner occupied. All those in favor? Pose? Okay, three to zero.
Do you understand that, Barry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that takes care of 556, 557. 558, I would entertain a motion that we... This says abatement process, but that's already in there, is it not?
No, that, we were talking about it last time, that's what, that's what this document was.
We wanna, I would entertain a motion that 558 be stricken by, vote on no action to this agenda. Because what's written in the last two paragraphs is a procedure of how the board will determine that that unit is vacant and how it is such policed or enforced. So that's a procedure versus a regulation because the regulation is in 557.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I suggested, since we were talking about the basement, some of the stuff we talked about in the last meeting, that's one of the reasons why, I know that the, one of the key issues that was brought up last time was financial hardship. And I mentioned this a little while ago. That's why I was thinking of language here that would specifically specify what the conditions are that we would define financial hardship to be, how we...
There is nothing, let me stop you right here, Gus. We have an agenda, this is a special meeting, there's nothing on here about financial hardships.
It says, that's the abatement process though, that's what we were talking about last time.
We have nothing in writing, we talked about it, but there has been nothing in writing to come before this board on a special meeting. We're making the agenda for the public hearing because we were required by the financial director on the dates. And at the same time, we take care of 556, 557. That will include the dates that the financial officer required on the billing and the avenue to opt out for, opting out period, because we had nothing in writing to opt out, even though people have been doing it. And the vacant apartment.
The people that I've been calling, asking about the financial hardships and the snowbirds and all that, I'm telling them about Thursday, next Thursday's meeting. I said, "If you wanna ask those questions, Thursday's the time to come."
At the regular meeting.
Yeah, so those questions will be coming in on Thursday.
So the question is, and are we doing the public hearing to include abatements or not?
No, we are gonna do the public hearing. If we wanna have the public hearing to get this done, we have to advertise for two weeks.
Oh, I know, I know, it works, yes.
And it's gotta be done today so that we're gonna have the proper language, which the only language you changed was 557 related to owner occupied.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay? It has to be sent out to be advertised and everything else so we can get that public hearing. If we have any other stuff on next month, next week's, it's all over the month, meeting, we have to talk about it, we have to have it written properly, we have to have agreed upon that format and the terminology before it can be added into that public hearing. And when are we gonna have the public hearing, June now? So the other thing that was been going on is that we are going to take this step by step, do it once, do it right, let's not rush it, get it off the table and move on. There is already an abatement process in the town, should somebody not do it, just like if you moved out. You, there's already an abatement process for your water sewer bill, so on and so forth. So if somebody is in between dates and they opt out and they paid for three months and they, they have two months left, there's an abatement process already, that's a process. But that's what the dates say. That's what the dates that the finance director needed. But it's not an agenda right now, it's not for that, and we're not ready to go to abatements and have that discussion on giving away everything for free because that's gonna be a long one.
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting I asked about abatements for low-income residents, someone 65 years or older.
Some of them people did too.
And, and they're 100% at the poverty level, federal poverty level or, or less. And you said you would bring it up at the next meeting. So here we are at the right next meeting.
This is a special meeting, we, we were planning on bringing it up at the regular meeting to discuss it because this was already in the queue.
We've changed plenty of agendas on every meeting I've ever been on, suspend the rules...
And some things worked and some things didn't. But we really have to discuss this thing. Everybody's got a different opinion, you've got senior rebate, which I'm getting a little bit off topic, but you've got senior rebate, but we're the cheapest avenue in town. I would benefit from the senior rebate, but where do we start and how do we enforce it?
Well, I would say it's a senior rebate, but they have to be a certain low income, that's what I would recommend.
Yeah, me too.
Because I'm a senior, I'm a senior too, but I certainly can afford this. I don't need to be, but I have plenty of people that I know have been talking to me, they are senior, and they are also at, at or below the poverty level, and they need some help with this.
Can we discuss that on the ninth?
Yes, Thursday.
I think that's the ninth, Thursday.
Okay. Appreciate it.
No problem. I will make a note for the agenda on...
I did as well.
You have that. Because we're not ready for that yet. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to...
I wanna, I wanna make a motion to remove abatement process, Agenda 3C, to discuss on further date.
Gus, second that.
I know. You guys wanted to do the five point, you wanted to delete this, the bottom.
No, we're, we're...
But I got a motion. So we're, we're X-ing that?
To a further date.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna do 5.5, 5.8 abatement.
The abatement's gonna go to a different date. I believe the last two paragraphs are a procedure on the process of 557, correct?
Correct, that does not belong...
That does not, does that have not anything in any remote form have to do with abatements? That was something in there piggybacking off 557, but that does not have to be a regulation, that's the process.
Right. Okay, so I just need a second to...
So that's the only reason it's stricken. Gus, second the removal of 558.
So unanimous, all?
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other business on this special meeting. Oh, yeah, that was the, the new agenda? We have to set a date for the public hearing, for these two items?
So I have the council chambers reserved for May 23rd at 6:00 PM.
I thought we were gonna do week 22nd at 6:00 PM.
May what? Whatever the third, no, I think it's the Wednesday.
Was Wednesday the 22nd?
Wednesday.
Yes, so that's the day. That's the day I reserved it.
It'll be the 22nd, which is the Wednesday, 6:00 PM, council chambers for the public hearing on these two items.
So I have today, May 9th, and May 22nd.
May 22nd, okay.
And I've got enough time to post it.